We are continuing to push this forward. This, what we have before you right now is some draft text. What I would really like to go over this evening are, I think, three major elements. One is the definition of what would be considered blighted property. And there are several definitions here, and I'll go through those. The second would be the procedure for declaring something blighted. There's some procedure in here. The third would be the amount of ad valorem tax that we would levy. And the fourth would be this idea of the rehabilitation and how we address that. So again, this is just draft. The basic elements are here for us to review and discuss. I think next steps with this, if you would like to proceed, are to work with our legal counsel to amend our existing nuisance abatement code to include this language, and then also get with our finance team to figure out how to actually do this. Okay? So today, I just want to briefly go over, you know, what is the purpose of this, so I can repeat that. I believe you all have printed copies, and I'll try to continue to move the crowd here along. And for those of you that might be watching online, I believe this is in the council packet. Okay. So the purpose of this really is a program that is intended to promote the development and revitalization of areas which contribute to or foster conditions detrimental to public health, safety, and safety. So let's talk about definitions. Now, this draft language was pulled from the cities of Auburn, Perry, and Albany, Georgia. So at our last discussion, we agreed that, you know, why reinvent the wheel? Go find some ordinances that are in place and work with that. So the way that this is set up right now, and this could all be subject to change, but the general approach in all of these ordinances is that you give a bit of a menu of things that you would say that we as a body, as a city, would make something a blighted property. Okay? So what we've proposed here is that blighted property means any real property on which there is a structure, so we're not talking about vacant land. There is a structure or which is vacant and unimproved and which presents two or more of the following conditions. So then we proceed to list out, I think it's upwards of 12 or 14 potential definitions, 15. So the idea here is that a property has to make two of these, right, in order for us to say that it is blighted. So let's go through a few of them. It's a menace to public health or safety. Now, as we go through these, I want you to just think a little bit about the way that we would determine that definition. I think this is an important part of the procedure for us to keep in mind. What is highlighted, and I apologize, you can't really see it on the screen here, but those of you who are looking at a printed copy, some of these definitions are in blue, some of them are in black. We originally decided to go with the black definitions, but we just kept adding to the list. So another effort here in a future iteration might be to call down this list of definitions. But for those of you who are listening, for those of you who are unable to read this, I'll read a few. The structure is unfit for human habitation or unfit for commercial, industrial, or business use, and not in compliance with applicable codes. The property has been the subject of repeated code violations, and the property owner has failed to take reasonable measures to correct the violations. The structure is dilapidated, unsanitary, unsafe, or vermin-infested, and not in compliance with applicable codes. It is a fire hazard. It has been vacant or abandoned for a period in excess of one year. So how would we determine that? We could determine that by looking at a utility bill, something like that, right? Inadequate provisions for ventilation, light-
Skip seven now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Has contributed to the decline of the surrounding area due to neglect or lack of maintenance.
So is there a way to quantify that?
It's a good question. I mean, I think that there are reports, if I could go back to our time when we did the work session, and we discussed some of the literature that Councilmember Ashimento shared with us, specifically in Brunswick and in Savannah, there were calculations that adjacent properties which are blighted or ill-maintained can have a negative value on surrounding properties, and also be a cost, I think it was to the tune of $1,200 a year to the city due to our code compliance department stepping in as property manager. Right?
I like it. I just want to make sure that we can back it up, you know, in using it as a, you know, as one of the two reasons.
And that may be something that, you know, one of these that maybe comes away because we have difficulty quantifying it. I've worked quite a bit with our legal team in the past two years, and I find that they're really great at sort of pressing right on that idea. So I have no doubt that when they kind of go through this with us, we'll see a little bit more information. You know, the presence of trash and rubbish, we don't have a lot of graffiti in the city, but the presence of trash and rubbish, you know, the city has, sorry, I've moved on. The city has adopted the International Property Maintenance Code. Oftentimes, when the code compliance department is writing notices of violation for properties, we will pull on our own litter ordinance, and we'll also pull on the International Property Maintenance Code to, you know, put something behind whatever the complaint is. So the department is pretty well-versed at, you know, finding whatever the violation is and the applicable code, and then communicating that to the property owner. Repeated illegal activity on the property. The maintenance of the property is below state code or municipal, state county or municipal codes for at least one year. Is conductive to ill-health, transmission of disease, infant mortality. I mean, so these kind of run the gamut of offenses, if you will. Any questions on these, other than just making sure that whatever we put can be quantified?
Just to use one of these as an example, like, has been vacant or abandoned for a period in excess of one year, and you use the example of utilities. So, I mean, we should outline that as the bar, is like-
We could.
Add that to the definition.
Mm-hmm. I think, I mean, so one of the things that we do in, you know, in regular code compliance protocol is if we do receive a complaint, we'll check into these types of things, you know, is it vacant? How can you determine it's vacant, other than going to the property and trying to, you know, get in and see? You can typically look at a utility account and say, there's been no water service here for two years. So we could add that to the language. Definitely doable. Any other questions on those definitions? Okay. Then we proceed to just go through some of the legal jargon here about, you know, what is a governing authority? What is a municipality? These are things that I don't think are, things that need to be discussed, per se. All right. So let's get into the procedure for identifying something as a blighted property. So this would currently reside, as it's written, with the city manager or his designee. A lot of, in our ordinance, quite a few times, this happens. It will say the city manager or their designee. That oftentimes falls to either myself or Chief Lackner. And then what will happen is that we'll prepare a written report identifying that real property. That report will include a legal description of the property, photographic documentation, if possible, and a summary of the code violations, police reports, fire department calls, or other relevant histories. So this report is where you package everything that we discussed in the definitions, right? So we've identified this property because of X, Y, and Z reasons. It meets our definition of blight for this, and here's the evidence of that. The property owner will be given notice and an opportunity to be heard before mayor and council. So you would be the ultimate deciding body on this, and that would be in the form of a public hearing. So there would be a notice, and they would have an opportunity to come before you as a body. Upon finding that the property is maintained in a blighted condition, as defined herein, the mayor and city council shall adopt a resolution declaring the property as officially maintained in a blighted condition, and shall authorize increased ad valorem taxation, as specified herein. Any questions on the process there? There are other municipalities that just issue the tax, right? When we were talking to Brunswick, they determined it to be blighted, and they issued the tax. We leaned on the side of offering the property owner the chance to come in to be heard.
Any opportunity to correct the situation, not at the present, the other?
Yeah. It's a good question. I mean, so, just so everyone understands, if we, if we in the department receive a complaint, that complaint will be reviewed by our code compliance officers. They will go and do an investigation, try to figure out and see for themselves. They may follow up with the complainant. Typically, what we do, always what we do, is we follow sort of a three-step process, which would be, we speak with the individual. If we can't get anywhere in speaking with the property owner or the tenant, then we will write an official notice of violation. That's something that comes from my office. It will have a corrective order on it. It will have a timeframe in which the owner of the property can reply. And then if we can't get there, then we move to a citation or a summons to appear in municipal court. This is a, this is a separate process, right? So it's a good discussion for us to have. You know, let's try to use a scenario. A property which may be in non-compliance of the International Property Maintenance Code, but has someone living in it, or has a business operating in it, right? Because we need to be clear here. We're talking about, we're not distinguishing in this between residential and commercial. We're talking about structures. So, but let's use a scenario where we have a dwelling, and that dwelling is occupied, and that dwelling is not in compliance with the International Property Maintenance Code. The path that we would proceed would be speaking, writing, and then citing to appear in municipal court. That's not something that I think we would apply to a structure that's been vacant for 10-plus years. Right? Those structures, to be honest, it's difficult to find the owner. They're oftentimes LLCs. They have registered agents, you know, up in Atlanta, and their home base is somewhere in California. So there's two different, you know, they're very, they're kind of vastly different approaches. And I think that this redevelopment tax approach is really meant to be for vacant, you know, not-present or absent property owners.
So would it be duplicitous in some way? I don't think so, based on what you just said, to make one of the basic requirements for blight be that they have been previously contacted or notified by-
Sure.
-the department that their property is blighted, you know, to, like I say, to allow some period of time, 30 days, or some activity to occur, to give them the opportunity to make amends before we drag the council and, you know, everyone into this process, that at the very least, that there was some, I mean, it's one of the potential 12 or 15 items that could be, you know, that they had been cited previously, but it's not a necessity necessarily.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, I think it perhaps should be a necessity that they have at least been notified and cited that their property is considered blighted, and given an opportunity to make some corrective actions over, you know, a short period of time.
A short period of time.
Not a year or six months, but that they're going to take some action within 30, 45 days before it becomes a hearing in front of the council.
Sure. And I think number three is probably in the definitions, is where I would camp that, has been the subject of repeated code violations, and the property owner has failed to take reasonable measures to correct the violations.
What I'm saying is, yeah, to take that and make that as-
A requirement.
Well, that it-
Free requisite.
This has happened, and at least one of the following other things. You know, if that's kind of like the key notification component, number three, you know, that we're aware of this, and it's been an issue for a while, you know, and we've cited them, so that this has happened, and then any one of the other things below makes it now elevated to the point where you're going to a hearing, and we're looking at, you know, increasing your property tax.
Sure. I have two follow-ups.
I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
Well, I wonder if that would give us better legal standing in assessing the tax, if we've at least given a 30-day period to correct.
And I think that that's, for me, that's a discussion about, what is that rehabilitation? You know, how do we, as a municipality, say, the rehabilitation is that you get a tenant in that commercial property, and it becomes vibrant? That's not something that we can do through our codes.
Well, but I mean, if the property is just vacant, and it's being maintained meticulously, that's only one function there, and there's nothing else to cite them about, just because it's vacant.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so they would not necessarily be blighted under that one condition of being vacant, if it's being maintained, like somebody's there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I think that kind of is where I'm coming from, is that everybody would like to have a tenant, and maybe that doesn't always happen in a perfect world, but you're taking care of your business, and you're taking care of your building, and you're not, you know, bringing everybody else down, then, you know, that is what it is. But once it turns, and we've cited them for any of these number of things, you know, then-
Yeah. I would, I think we, oops, sorry, everybody.
It fell off the wall again.
Deborah. Thank you. It'll come back shortly. Let's see. I don't know what just happened. Okay. So we in the, in the code compliance department are gonna figure out some things in a very short order. So the last time that we spoke about this, I had mentioned how we have some persistently challenging properties in the city, in which for several years, our code compliance department has been reminding property owners of their lack of attention to grass and weeds, or litter, or mobile vendors that are operating on their property without permits, or, you know, all types of things, in which we become the eyes for a property owner that is never here. And we have taken the steps to bring some of those properties to municipal court. And so the citation, the code that we've used, is usually around litter or grass and weeds. And what we find ourselves in right now is the property owner will claim, will plead not guilty because they've mowed the grass. The issue at hand is that we've been asking you to mow your grass every year for three years, every month during the growing season. So it's that absence of property maintenance that we're trying to decouple here. So I think we'll learn a lot in that legal activity, and that can inform-
Well, I think that, you know, you said it exactly there. Number three, has been the subject of repeated code violations, not, you know, you know, that meets number one for me, based on what you're saying there in that scenario. And if we link anything else to that, the property's vacant, you know, then that, that's the second thing, maybe that links it and puts them here, but they have at least been notified multiple times.
Right.
You know, and to me, that one works, you know, in that-
Understood.
And I say, as we get into this, we might find out that something else comes up that we're not thinking of, but, you know, as Councilwoman King was saying, I agree that, you know, that having some opportunity, or at least being aware before, and most likely that's going to be the case, but, you know, just to make sure that that's the process we're following, I think.
Yep.
If we're going to adopt language, which I think is a good idea, to give somebody, you know, like, a 30-day notice, should we also consider some language if it is an absent owner, where we've tried, like, how long do we try to get a hold of them, if there's certified letters sent, or whatever the case may be, for contact? And then there has to be a follow-up period somewhere, where we've been asking you for a year now to keep up with your property, unresponsive. Now, we're at this point, we're trying to give you a 30-day notice, so does it just end after the 30 days, that we're just going to go ahead and apply the tax if they're unresponsive for that period of time?
Yeah. I mean, so I think the letter could read something like, you know, it could be a preemptive to the report that's in this procedure, where we issue that notice, and then we offer them 30 days. And if they do not respond within 30 days, then we schedule the hearing to come before council.
Well, you know, one other thing, the negative effect that is happening on properties around theirs is humongous. I see it with all kinds of properties in our area.
Okay. Thank you. Just taking some notes here. All right. I think we have a little bit of time to now move on to the increased ad valorem tax. So when we had discussed this at the last session, there really isn't a limit as to how much more you can charge. We're proposing here seven times. So I think in the past, we had discussed as low as five, cities go as low as three, or they go as high as 10. Any thoughts on this?
I think we should go as high as we can go.
Yeah, I was gonna say 10.
We need to make it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
What is Brunswick doing, seven times or 10 times?
It's somewhere up there. Yeah. It's somewhere up there, but I can't remember right now. Seven to 10.
Your notice.
Yeah.
10 times is coming.
10 times is coming.
Another really interesting scenario here that I just want to bring to our attention that we'll need to discuss and come up with some way to assess this, or to actually do this and monitor this. Revenues arising from the increased rate of ad valorem taxation shall be segregated by the city and used only for community redevelopment purposes, including but not limited to affordable housing, code enforcement, infrastructure improvements, redevelopment grants and loans, public safety enhancements.
I think it's good.
This one, I think, you know, the, so, once you've determined a property to be blighted, we, and it's not quite in here yet, but I think it would be very wise to craft an agreement in which the terms of how the property can be redeveloped or become rehabilitated, and therefore taken off the increased ad valorem taxation list, that, we need to flesh that out a little bit more here, so that there would, we would, both parties would be as prepared as possible when someone, a property owner, feels that they have rehabilitated their property. They need to be assured that their investments, you know, after they do them, will be met with having the property come off the list. And I think, right now, we've got the concept of that in this language, but we don't have a very solid way to get there. And I think that will be instrumental, that a property owner can see for themselves what it's going to take to bring that property off of this taxation list. And, you know, another question I have is, I don't know what happens after that. You know, what if they don't pay the tax? What if they say, there's no way I'm going to be able to rehabilitate? These are all things that I think are the second iteration of this draft, and, you know, we'll keep working on that with legal counsel and bring something back before you for that.
Well, and for the cost of blighting a property, do we have them pay at least the first year, these seven or 10 times, the assessment that gets paid to contribute to these?
Yeah. I mean, I believe that's what Dee says, that it shall be lifted in the year following the determination. So they would have, once, like I say, and once they've been notified, and they let it go to the hearing, and then they were found to be blighted-
They're paying the one year.
They're paying their tax at that point, whether they clean it up the next day or not, because they let it get to that point.
Mm-hmm.
Knew it was coming. They were notified. They had, you know, some time to react before they showed up here. You know, if they show up here after 30 days, and they can demonstrate that they're doing A, B, and C already, and they've got D and F, you know, work, you know, in process, you know, then maybe we, as a council, say, okay, you know, we're going to give you another 30 days, or something, you know, before doing this tax, because you are, you started working on it before the hearing, you got some more to do, and, you know, I mean, that's a determination we can make at that time, but if they don't do anything, and they show up here, they're gonna, they should pay the tax, even if they go the next day and start cleaning, or whatever, you know.
I feel like they ought to pay the tax, even if they start cleaning once they're notified, once it becomes blighted, because we have expended all this effort.
Well, it won't be technically blighted until we vote on it at the hearing, though. So is what I'm saying.
Oh, you're saying they come to the hearing with having done all those things. But still, we're convening, we've been through-
Well, I agree.
-all the processes. It's, I mean, it's a discussion we need to have, but-
Right.
And do we articulate what we expect?
Right. And I'm very interested also, and like I say, legally, what can we do when that is ignored, when that property tax, you know, increase is not paid, you know, at what point, how long do we have to go before we can take action on that private property, you know, and are we able to even take action? Sometimes depending on the scope of what the problem is, but-
They would become unpaid property taxes, correct, for somebody-
Yeah.
I mean, the encouragement here is to try to get a vacant, dilapidated building either fixed up by the existing owner, if they're unwilling to, to encourage them to sell their property to somebody that will fix it up.
Right.
And I think one of the, one of the things that we've also been thinking about in tandem with this is, you know, as the Carl Vinson Institute and UGA start on the planning for the revitalization of Midtown, some other tools, this is, this is a tool in the toolbox, right? So, so there's this idea of this redevelopment tax incentive, but maybe we can think about an overlay in the zoning, which is very, you know, permissible. Lots of activities, lots of things to do, lots of flexibility that can be done as of right. Maybe we work with the JDA and with Main Street to ensure that there are grants that would enable redevelopment. So any way that we can incentivize, and this would be, again, just a part of the package of incentives to steer redevelopment to Midtown.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, you, you know, this is the stick that we're talking about. Is there a carrot? You know, is there something to make them-
Sure. There is a carrot. So, yeah, and I think, you know, the carrot could be the zoning, the carrot could be other grants. I mean, I think we'd run into a little, little trickiness there if we're ready to determine a property blighted, and we're also going to give it a grant, so, but all good things to have to work through. All right. With that, I think what we'll do is, staff and I will work this over a little bit, and get with legal counsel, and then maybe next quarter sometime, if that timing feels good.
Do you want to see, we got just a couple minutes for any public comments?
Oh, sure. Sure.
Anybody like to make any comments about this, please, go on the podium, give us your name and address?
Judy Thuner, 202 West Bryan Street.
Push the button.
Go ahead.
Lights on red, it's got to be green.
On the bottom. Well, okay. Thank you. Judy Thuner, 202 West Bryan Street. In regards to what you were saying, is this okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Don't be too easy. I know from living here, somebody was notified by code compliance who works very hard. This person had been notified prior code compliance officers. They come in, they cut their grass, what little bit was available to cut. Nothing else done, grass goes right back up. The litter is grown right, but that one time, cutting the grass, they, okay, I think you gotta beware of that. Don't, don't be easy, people.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, yeah, I think that, like I say, that goes back to that repeated violation, you know.
Yeah.
Larry White, 102 Soubis Court. I can tell you from personal experience of a property that I know of, that he has his one neighbor come over and cut his front lawn. He hasn't lived in that house for over four years. I think he still owns the house. So, his one neighbor graciously comes over, cuts most of his front lawn, but I, one side of his driveway, I used to do that. Then I stopped. Now, my property, we cut the grass there, but the weed, that the grass is about that tall, about that wide, where the one neighbor refuses to mow it. Now, if you look in his backyard, I don't know, blighted should reply, apply to backyards also. He has his entire backyard is full of weeds, at least six to seven feet tall, and there's been snakes coming out from his backyard into the property that I own. Now, you need to look into, blighted not only means structures, but it means the condition of the property, i.e. the yard.
Yeah. Thanks.
I forgot to mention the snakes.
Ken Jelly, 102 Salt Grass Trace in St. Mary's. I want to-
Turn to high ends now.
Two P M, private.
All right, better?
Yes.
I want to applaud the city council, and also our community development director. This is not an easy task whatsoever. If anybody that's listening thinks this is easy, put pen to paper, and then somebody signs it, and it's all going to happen, well, we all know it's not. I was particularly impressed with Councilman Keen's position with, let's give him the full stroke of the pump. And I agree, this type of enforcement comes only after significant violation and demonstration on the part of the owner, that they are not willing to do anything to participate, and they are going to continue to ignore the city leadership. So, that in and of itself would, in my opinion, mandate that they get as severe a fine as possible, for as long as possible, and give them really no benefit of the doubt, you know. But again, thank you all very much, I know it's tough, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, we will adjourn this work session. Be back at 6 o'clock for our city council meeting.